Before we begin, this is a reminder that this is a remote meeting and teleconference using Zoom. One MRSA, section four oh three A. Welcome to the Sanford Planning Board Meeting for June sixteenth, twenty twenty one. Meeting will come to order. Public proceeding and unless the board specifically votes to go into executive session, you have the right to hear everything that's being said and look at all the exhibits that are offered. Please notify the chair if you're unable to see or hear something. Please know that if any planning board members have any potential conflicts of interest, of which they are aware, they will disclose the conflict prior to the board initiating a hearing or action on an application. Person speaking will be asked to state the name and address and then proceed. Sole discretion of the chair, public testimony may be limited to five minutes per speaker. Each item, the applicant will be asked to describe the project thereafter. The chair will ask opponents of the project to speak, followed by opponents and those who are neither for nor against, but may want to ask a question or make a general comment. Everyone who wants will have the opportunity to speak to the board through the chair. Any questions must go through and through the chair, who will then decide at what point to be asked staff or the applicant to respond. Chair may wait until after the testimony has concluded to seek answers to any questions that are raised by the public or board members. Please note that ruinous, unsocial behavior, clapping, cheering, booing, etc. will not be tolerated. And if those behaviors occur, the chair at his discretion may terminate the hearing and reschedule it for another day. In addition, the chair at his discretion will limit repetitious comments, although it is entirely appropriate for an individual to indicate that he or she agrees with the previous speaker. Trying to close in closing the public hearing, the chair will ask if there are any new comments and the applicant will be allowed to make a single rebuttal in response to the testimony which was provided. Once public hearing portion of the meeting is closed, the chair will accept no additional public comment. However, a member of the board at his discretion may ask the applicant or a member of the public to respond through a question. This will not reopen public comment. Planning board decisions are based solely on whether an applicant has provided sufficient evidence to meet the requirements of local, state and federal laws. This regard, public testimony is most effective when it considers the impact of a project in light of Stanford subdivision, site plan, shore land, or zoning ordinances or other relevant regulations. After the board votes on the merits of each project, it will vote on written findings and facts. Findings may substantially affect any appeal rights and also as a matter of courtesy, the board asks that there's a ten minute, not leaving until the board has adopted the findings for the project they are interested in. After the planning board makes its final decision, any reconsideration by the board must be made at its next regularly scheduled meeting. Anyone wishes to appeal the board's final decision, he or she must do so within thirty days. City's ordinances and comprehensive plan are available for viewing on the city's website and in the Planning and Development Department's office at nine nineteen Main Street. Remember, this is a public proceeding, you have the right to see and hear what is happening and we welcome public participation. Okay. And I guess we can do the roll call.
Um, are you prepared to do that?
Yeah.
Yes, sorry. I forgot, I knew myself. Uh, Diane Connolly.
Present.
Joe Hanslip. Is he here? I thought he was here.
I don't think he is.
Okay, then that must be a different Joe then. Oliver Jones. Um, Jack McAdam.
Here.
Thomas Morgan. Crystal Tenny. And Lenny.
Present.
Okay.
We don't have a quorum, Lenny.
We don't have a quorum. How many made it? How many did he call? Four, right?
Um, yeah. We said they were here. Joe is, did not. Even though we saw his name there, my assumption is that that's not Joe Hanslip.
Interesting. We've had this problem before.
So Diane did talk with Joe and he said that he would be here, but he would likely be late. Um, so I guess we can sit tight or we can go to the planning director's report and um, and just try to eat up a little bit of time and when um, you know, when one more board member arrives, we can begin the meeting and.
Um, why don't we try going into recess for about five minutes or ten minutes and see if somebody joins us?
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Uh, like me to place a call to Crystal?
Yeah. Try, yeah.
Alright. Okay.
Is there any way you can guys to put something up on the screen that just says we're in recess?
We'd have to create it, Lenny. We don't have it.
Take like a, open up an empty Word document or something and just type something? Pop it up on the screen maybe? Just kind of throwing that out there.
I can make something for the uh, public TV real quick. But you guys won't see it.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks. Yeah, we got Molly on the teleprompter.
If Molly or John sees anybody else come to the meeting, please speak up.
Lenny, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, sorry, I didn't know. Um, I left a voicemail. I told her call me on my cell.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have any interest in stories or jokes to tell? We need at least four people to hold the meeting, so we are waiting to make contact with at least one more person so we can hold the meeting. So we are in recess until we can uh, resolve that.
The director's report.
I think part of the director's report probably would require, I think it's gonna be looking for some feedback from the members. So it's not, it's not just a report, it's gonna be looking for some feedback too, I think.
No, Lenny, I was just gonna report on the status of the comp plan.
So I didn't know if you wanted our feedback on that or?
Well, you can offer feedback, but it's not binding. Um, and you know, we don't have a quorum, so it would be entirely up to you if you want whichever way you want to go with that.
If we can't hold a meeting tonight, this is obviously gonna cause some issues. Certainly, all this is gonna get pushed over to the uh, the beginning of uh, June, uh, July, is that correct?
Yeah, so we would add these items to that agenda and re-notify people.
Something I would prefer not to do if we can help that.
Well, it would be nice if members of the planning board would uh, let Beth know if they're gonna be here or not.
I agree, and that's written into our bylaws, there is a requirement for it, so.
Lenny, can we hold a special meeting?
Hmm, I'm gonna say no, because I think that creates some other issues.
Okay, just a thought. Lenny, I got an update from Joe. He's still stuck at the jail.
What's he doing in jail?
We just want to explain that a little bit.
Jail commissioner.
Oh, okay.
How much does it cost to get him out of there?
I don't know, I'm closest to him, I guess I can go haul him out.
Yeah. Well, I'll pitch him. Yeah, Beth, if you want to burn some time with our report, I guess we can.
Okay. Um, so uh, I met with the zoning subcity um, last Tuesday. They asked for a uh, 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 sort of a status report on where we are with the comp plan. Um, this, a lot of what I'm gonna say will not be new to you, you, we've been talking about this for a few months. Um, uh, we are delayed, um, we've been delayed because we had a uh, staffing shortage for more than a quarter of this calendar year thus far. Um, John came on and we have been spending time training. Uh, we also have had um, significant number of development applications. And there, excuse me, have also been a number of planning related projects that the city manager has asked me to engage in. For all those reasons, we're sort of behind. But what we have done since the last time there was an update uh, for the council is we've continued to work with Spatial Alternatives, um, our GIS consultant to refine and add to the natural resources map um, and to collect relevant data from the GIS database. We've also continued to work with her on setting up the online platform to share information and solicit feedback from the community as the update proceeds. Um, I have been able to do some work on the social services for the RFPs to undertake the market analysis and to collect the economic development, uh, economic development data to support update of the area wide plan, which is a, uh, the master plan that guides, um, that establishes the vision and then prepares a strategy to guide redevelopment of the Mill Yard, uh, the downtown and I would say in part the East Side neighborhood. Um, uh, I, I have not completed that work however. Um, and so we haven't got that RFP out. Um, both the process and the proposed amendments of the area wide plan are intended to be integrated into the updated comp plan. Um, met with the Brownfields Advisory Committee and successfully solicited its assistance and advising uh, on the community outreach related to updating the area wide plan. Um, I provided a revised schedule. Um, and uh, the schedule uh, essentially called for completing the draft and this is assuming that we can get on top of some of this stuff. Uh, completing the draft inventory chapters mid to late September. Um, starting to establish the advisory committee um, in September. Uh, doing the getting started analysis between September and November and that involves uh, working with various boards and committees to talk with them about what was accomplished and not accomplished or only partially accomplished um, in the two thousand, from the two thousand and five plan. Um, and what the issues are that are facing the community from their perspective. There'll also be specific work on that with the planning board, with the advisory, company has a plan advisory committee and likely um, the city council, if not the full council, then certainly I think zoning sub. Um, the uh, multi-day community forum, open house, we're looking at that happening in January. Uh, might be able to get that in sooner, but um, uh, it doesn't usually make sense to start a major outreach effort um, anywhere between Thanksgiving and New Year's. People's attentions are divided and primarily focused on their families at that time. So it's just not a, a great time to do it. Um, other community forums, uh, there'll be a number of them um, on various topic areas, I suspect. And again, all this is all, this is a rough outline at this point. The advisory committee will certainly dig into it and make adjustments as it feels is appropriate. But the other forums uh, will likely happen over the winter months into the spring, so February to May. Um, there will then also be a joint workshop between the advisory committee, the city council and the planning board. Uh, and that'll take place May through June, it could happen in one meeting, two meetings or three meetings. Those joint workshops will focus on the future land use plan, uh, the regional coordination strategy and the capital investment strategy. Um, and then a general look at implementation strategy um, to get some general feedback before they are finalized for um, a draft completed plan that will be submitted and go through a um, review process likely ranging from June to September. So essentially about um, a year from now, we hope to have a draft ready. Um, again, this is all contingent on being able to get a handle on the, the workload. Um, the city, the zoning subcommittee actually was uh, very responsive. Um, I went through the, the detail of, of how I would envision and what I will propose to the advisory committee for how we go about doing the update. Um, it's all in the memo that I sent out to you, I, I'm not gonna go over it uh, in detail today. You've seen it a couple of times at this point, although we haven't dug into it too deeply. Um, but anyway, um, the, the zoning subcommittee um, felt that it was thorough, appropriate, reasonable and also said, we gotta get the planning department some more resources so we can keep it, get this on schedule and keep it on schedule. Um, so uh, Molly and I, uh, and John have been working a, a bit on this over the last week trying to, you know, look at different alternative ways this might happen and investigating some avail, available staffing resources out there, whether that's at a consulting level or, or not. Um, in particular, I've been uh, trying to work with the Southern Maine Planning and Development Commission. Um, and uh, I will be meeting with the city manager tomorrow morning to begin going over some of the alternative approaches that we might look at. Um, and it's tentatively scheduled for a, a report back to the zoning subcommittee next Tuesday. Um, I wish I could give you more specifics, but we are actually, you know, working on it on a day by day basis to try to get to the point of having a reasonable proposal to go forward. Um, um, I think that's mostly it. One of the questions that if the board does want to talk about this, it won't be binding, but if you do want to talk about this, one of the things that um, I had actually put in front of you uh, probably a couple of meetings ago, was to start thinking about the advisory committee. Um, if you look at the description of the advisory committee, and this is the one section that described in the memo that I, I just said I wasn't gonna talk about, um, but I'm gonna go over this. Um, so the advisory committee, the recommendation, uh, I'm recommending that the planning board form the core to the advisory committee supplemented by two to four other people representing various interests, interests and geographies, one to two at-large members. Um, it's important, um, from my experience in working with a bunch of communities across the state, both in my position at the State Planning Office, um, managing the growth management program and then also um, with about twenty years in private consultant, consulting, working with individual communities actually on preparing comp plans, that while it may seem like a larger committee um, provides for uh, greater participation, it's been our, my, our experience that that's not usually a good idea. Um, if the committee is too large, um, a couple of things tends to happen. People think, well, you know, it's such a big committee, nobody will care that much if I skip this meeting. Um, and a lot of people will think that way, not just that one person. And so over time, you start to lose continuity, people start dropping out. Um, and so you really end up um, with an overinflated committee in terms of size, but la, but a very small, much smaller committee in terms of participation. Um, the other uh, reason is that a larger committee um, will consume more airtime talking things through and that in itself will also uh, encourage people to drop out. Um, because they're, they'll feel like they're not getting heard or they're, you know, that they're, that it's just too long and each meeting is too long and boring. So um, based upon watching that happen all over the state, um, both with, when I had that oversight role at state planning, but also um, in my own consulting practice, um, uh, we refined the approach for the advisory committee to really be different. And remember, this is based on the fact that we're not talking about a total redo. We're talking about an update of the existing plan, which is a pretty good plan, just getting a bit dated and missing a couple of topics that have emerged over the last um, thirteen, fourteen years. Um, so the advisory committee in this case um, would, the pri, has four primary roles. One is to manage and solicit involvement in the public outreach process. Um, the second is to undertake a very general review of the draft inventory chapters, mostly focusing on um, you know, are there things here that touch really um, significant hot buttons in the community that might then be misunderstood and could be re-sprayed uh, or rewarded in such a way that you could still get the issue out there, but not, you know, basically um, light a fire unnecessarily. Um, the intention there is that the committee will make sure we don't make those major faux pas. But we don't want the committee really heavily invested in wordsmithing the document. We want them to basically come into the community forum almost on par with the rest of the community as they're looking at these inventory chapters. Um, you know, they'll, they'll, they'll be available online before the forum. Um, people will have an opportunity to comment there. And then when you're at the forum, which we're anticipating is gonna be a hybrid forum, probably a bit of uh, face to face, but also we'll have an online opportunity for those folks who still are not comfortable being out uh, in the community or who simply find it more convenient um, to participate uh, without having to come to a meeting. Um, so uh, we would want the, the advisory committee to kind of be fully participatory in that forum. There's likely to be a series of stations set up with interactive um, activities. Um, we'll be focusing a bit on visioning, we'll be looking at each of the inventory chapters, asking, you know, some questions. Um, hoping that we'll have advisory committee members helping to staff those and, and if there are more than we need in terms of the number of stations, then, then they can sort of circulate with the rest of the public um, to participate and be another set of ears to hear what people are talking about. Um, and then the third role, and this is really critical, um, is to engage local officials and key movers and shakers um, in the community through direct conversation, sharing information gained through the forums and in the inventories and then bringing that information back to the advisory committee. And then the fourth role is that when we get through those forums and we haven't resolved all the issues that are in front of the public through the discussion of the forums and the input that we get, ultimately, we would be looking to the advisory committee to, you know, make decisions and finalize recommendations about issues that aren't resolved. Um, um, so the question I had put in front of the uh, planning board a, a few meetings ago is how do you want to participate in this? And I do see somebody else joined us, I think it was Matt Hill, so that's not helping us with a quorum. Um, uh, how do you, how do you want to do this? Do you want the whole planning board to be um, um, engaged in the committee? Do you want to um, uh, ask for volunteers and or solicit um, a certain number of planning board members to be on the committee and then serve as a liaison with the planning board? Um, it's pretty much up to you to make a recommendation. Ultimately, appointment to the advisory committee will be made by the city council. So if you do want to schmooze about that a little bit, I see no reason you can't do that. It, it, it's not gonna be a final decision, Lenny, we don't have the quorum.
So we, we can discuss this without any, any issues?
I think you can discuss it, um, uh, you just can't, you can leave.
Just can't take any action?
Correct, correct.
I guess my personal thought would be maybe take as many planning board members who want to be involved on it and then go for volunteers. I'm not sure we're gonna get the full planning board out for that anyway. As you can see tonight, we're having some issues, but or maybe volunteers, you know, whoever wants to volunteer from the planning board and then add to that.
Among the three of you that are here this evening, um, what's your druthers? Lenny, I know you expressed to me that you'd like to be on, on the advisory committee. What about you, Jack, and you, Diane?
Yes, I'd like to be on there especially to represent farmers.
Diane?
Um, I was wondering if I could have a more in-depth conversation with you privately first before I make any decision. Um, most of me is like seventy-five percent saying, yeah, I'd, I'd like to be on it. I, I just have a few hangups that I need to smooth with you first about it, if that's alright.
Absolutely, I mean, again, there's no decision tonight. This was just sort of, you know, sticking my, my finger in the water to see uh, you know, kind of what the temperature is. Um,
I'm glad I got the water back.
That's right, Diane, sorry about that.
Does the council approve the members?
They would have to, yeah, they would have to make the actual appointment. But, you know, planning board can certainly make a recommendation. Uh, likely it would be reviewed and discussed at zoning subcommittee and then they would make a recommendation to the council.
That's something we can do at the next meeting or maybe look at it in the future?
Well, I was looking at this sort of starting at the end of the summer, the beginning of fall.
Okay.
You know, the, the group will not start meeting until the draft inventory chapters are largely done. Um, uh, again, we're trying to discourage the committee expending all its energy on wordsmith, wordsmithing eleven inventory chapters and then running out of steam before you get into what's really the heart and soul of the plan, which is the policy discussion. Um, and most of that, like I said, is going to happen in a, a very public arena. Um, yes, the advisory committee will be having meetings, but virtually everything that's produced is going to be put on the online platform with different ways of soliciting input. Um, you know, there'll be a public participation strategy that will likely the advisory committee will develop. Um, uh, I, I've already said to Zendal a, a couple of times now, once we get, ready to get started, I'm gonna wanna have a sit down with her to discuss how she'd like to receive material and the kinds of things that she might be willing to do. Uh, she may come back and ask for, for example, different members of the communities to write little thought pieces. Now, that may not go, that might go to the Sanford Springdale News, or it might simply go, get posted on the online platform. But I think we want to have a very robust outreach strategy um, where these conversations happen in a very public fashion. Um, and from those conversations, um, that will be, you know, draft materials, draft policies, draft strategies, draft vision statements, they'll all be posted and people will have an opportunity both, um, you know, physically if they want to come and observe the advisory committee meetings where the final, you know, refinements are made, um, uh, Um, uh, or if they simply want to participate online. Um, we're expecting there'll be interactive conversations. Um, uh, I don't know, I can't tell you exactly how they're gonna run yet. Um, we're still in the process, as I said, of putting that platform together. Um, once we have a draft, you know, we certainly, uh, you know, we'll get it started, but there will be opportunities for refinements and adjustments once the advisory committee is actually meeting.
I think the public outreach is really good. I think that's really the most important component of that, because that's really, you know, to get people in Sanford involved in it, I think is really gonna make it work.
Right. Um, in a structured way.
Yeah.
I guess, Mr. Chair, I should point out that it's now, uh, two past seven and ask you if you want to, uh, uh, keep just chatting, or if you, um, uh, uh, if you want to basically close the meeting and just, uh, let our applicants go. I know we've got representatives for each of the applicants here this evening, and, and some of them are being paid um, by their, their clients.
Yeah. Um, it's really unfortunate. I was hoping we could get this stuff off our plate tonight, but, uh, you know, I'll apologize personally to everybody who is here, um, who has joined the meeting, who hopes to have a discussion on your application tonight. I'm sorry. Um, we have an issue with attendance. Um, that's something that I can take up with the, uh, planning director offline, and hopefully, this is the first time I can recall this happening. I've been involved in the planning board since twenty fourteen, and I don't recall this ever happening before, so uh, clearly there's an issue that we need to resolve, so I'll apologize to everybody who's in attendance tonight, and for that, I think we can close the meeting. Okay.
Because we never opened it.
No, yeah, we never, we never formally opened it, but, uh, I guess, uh, um, I guess, um, I guess that'll do it. I guess we'll just ask everybody to sign out tonight, and we'll, planning department will be in touch, and we'll let you know when your application will be, uh, back on the agenda. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Blaine.
Thank, thanks, everyone. Sometimes it happens.
It does, unfortunately. Thank you for your patience.